Got Monday, September eighth, two thousand twenty-five. We'll call this Chico South County Boarding to convene. We'll call members Sukko, Silinsky, Brightback, and Hattner present. Isaac, perhaps since we are also with Board Secretary Sheila Shackleton. Is there a motion today to approve the agenda? Yes, for September eighth. There was one additional added in the afternoon of the fully tailored. So please include that.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Steve, second by Travis, to approve the agenda with the additional item. That was added Friday. Any discussion? If not, we'll call Steve.
Aye.
Travis.
Scott.
Aye.
Jake, I motion carried four zero with the absence of Isaac. Approve the minutes from September second, which was the Tuesday meeting. Is there a second?
Sorry.
Motion to approve the minutes from September second was made by Scott, second by Travis. Any discussion? If not, roll call Scott.
Aye.
Travis.
Aye.
Steve.
Aye.
Jake, I motion carried four zero with the absence of Isaac. Moving to the approved minutes from September fourth, which was the Thursday budget work session amendment. Sorry. Motion by Travis, second by Steve, to approve the minutes from September fourth. Any discussion? If not, Travis.
Aye.
Steve.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Jake, I motion carried four zero with the absence of Isaac. Um, you can do claims, I think. Payroll date last Friday is September fifth. Any concerns or issues? Is there a motion to approve?
Sorry.
Motion by Scott, second by Steve, to approve the payroll claims dated for September fifth. Any discussion? If not, Scott.
Aye.
Steve.
Aye.
Travis.
Aye.
Jake, I motion carried four zero with the absence of Isaac. Claims, I did not see no prior claims, so the claims are two hundred and fourteen thousand, two hundred and thirty-six dollars and twenty-four cents.
Oh. Sorry.
Claims to be paid was two hundred and fourteen thousand, two hundred and thirty-six dollars and twenty-four cents. Moved by Travis, second by Steve. Any discussion? If not, we'll call Travis.
Aye.
Steve.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Jake, I motion carried four zero with the absence of Isaac. Just waiting about thirty seconds. Any public comments today, Steve?
No, there was no written.
Request? All right, no public comment today, so we'll move on to the treasurer at this point, Matt.
Good morning.
So you've got five resolutions from last week?
Yeah, so we had the ones that Ray was talking about mostly last week. And uh, so it's City of Nashville and uh, one church. So now those we can't abate, we're just, they do a formal resolution. And then abate.
They go down to the?
Yeah. I'm gonna double check the numbers, but there's even never got my check.
So we got five of them here, like Matt said.
Those are all the same.
They're all the same here, so.
I guess that.
You guys saw one copy, I think, thirty-four. I don't want to see the other ones in our board packet, but.
Thirty-three.
Did you see them all?
There's thirty-three, thirty-four.
Thirty-five, thirty-six, thirty-seven, perfect, I guess we got them. So thirty-four is um, City of Nashville, uh, abating uh, eight hundred and fifty dollars. Resolution thirty-three. So the three people that will sign this would be the chair, the auditor, and the treasurer. It was like thirty-three.
Thirty-three, okay, I thought you said thirty-four.
He said thirty-five, don't look back.
In order from that, not this one. So the first one was thirty-three, eight hundred and fifty dollars.
Not ordered or packed.
No. But that's okay. So let's just do them in order, thirty-three is the first one.
I moved to approve resolution nine dash eight dash twenty-five dash thirty-three.
Second. Motion by Scott, second by Steve, to approve resolution nine eight twenty-five dash thirty-three. Abating eight hundred and fifty dollars for the City of Nashville. Any discussion? If not, we'll call Scott.
Aye.
Steve.
Aye.
Travis.
Aye.
Jake, I motion carried four zero with the absence of Isaac. Thirty-four then, resolution is City of Nashville, a total of a hundred and thirty-two dollars. To abate.
Sorry.
Resolution nine eight twenty-five thirty-four, abating property owned by the City of Nashville. Motion by Travis, second by Steve. Any discussion? If not, roll call Travis.
Aye.
Steve.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Jake. I motion carried four zero with the absence of Isaac. Resolution nine eight twenty-five dash thirty-five is the City of Nashville again for a total of fifty-two dollars abated.
So. Second.
Motion by Scott, second by Steve, to approve resolution thirty-five. Any discussion? If not, roll call Scott.
Aye.
Steve.
Aye.
Travis.
Aye.
Jake, I motion carried four zero with the absence of Isaac. Travis, together, we can't. Resolution nine eight twenty-five dash thirty-six is the abatement of owned by City of Nashville for a total of fifty-sixty dollars.
Second.
Motion by Steve, second by Travis, to approve resolution nine eight twenty-five dash thirty-six in the amount of three sixty abate owned by the City of Nashville. Any discussion? Not, roll call Steve.
Aye.
Travis.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Jake, I motion carried four zero with the absence of Isaac. And I think the last one is thirty-seven. Abating property taxes on parcel owned by the New Hampton Methodist Church to abate three thousand five hundred and seventy-four dollars. Is there a second? Motion by Scott, second by Travis, to approve resolution nine eight twenty-five dash thirty-seven. Abating property taxes owned by New Hampton Methodist Church in the amount of three thousand five hundred and seventy-four dollars. Any discussion? If not.
I'm sorry, you seconded that?
Travis. If not, roll call Scott.
Aye.
Travis.
Aye.
Steve.
Aye.
Jake, I motion carried four zero with the absence of Isaac. Department update, Matt Gaetlin?
Uh, no, not really. Uh, driver's license, I guess. Um, the next, if anyone needs to get in like immediately, like if they lost their license or something, they're probably gonna have to pull up. Come here, like the state office for the next few weeks and then um, we should be our contract in October, so. We'll start taking appointments probably two weeks from today for October, so. It's uh, should be back to normal. At that point.
Then I guess what is fully taken appointments, send back to normal?
Yep. So I know whenever the state gets that implemented with the online appointments, we'll probably go to that system. Cause that'll give the people the options they can, like if they need to get in today, it'll give them like if we have the appointment open or it'll give them like another office close by that they can schedule and I kind of go both ways too because if we have an appointment open, then somebody from way away can drive up here. Any of those things.
Proper tax coming in, they're due by September thirtieth?
Yep, we have about an extra week of collecting in August because we had them already this year, so.
A lot of people using the online?
Yeah, mail's very popular still, so. That's good though, it gives us the chance and to get them run through when we're around time, so. Online and through the mail works good.
Any questions for Matt? All right, thank you.
Thanks.
How good do you sign then? Do you have to sign the two, the resolutions?
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, Conservation Director Chad O'Conne, good morning Chad.
Good morning.
Got four things on the agenda here, so we'll just go from the top to bottom. Up on the screen too, I have the pictures, discuss Muntzen Park items to be removed. The four items?
Yep. So technically there's a couple more in that pile with the pillows and like blankets, but obviously you can imagine what those are like, what kind of addition they're like sitting out there in that building, so. Um, those were pulled out by the um, Jacksonville crew and then I had my board approve it, so now we're here with um, heavier guys' approval, if you wanna, if it's okay to dispose of those four items.
What's the top thing?
That wheel? Yeah. I don't know for sure what it is.
It's a little sort of millstone.
Yeah, some sort of old wheel or grinding, but it's obviously been dropped or it's split in half as you can see and just, yeah. And all those big heavy things that's in the way.
Are the recommendations so far to us is to just dispose of them and give it?
Yeah, I think, yeah, we'll just remove them and for the dumpster. You know, I don't see a lot of that, even though the mower, the wooden spindle on the back is broken off. It's not that old of a mower. It's got a metal handle versus, you know, the original one, the old ones were wood handles, so I mean, yeah. Unless somebody wanted, maybe Dean wants that period mower on the courthouse. I'm guessing he's not gonna want to be there, so.
The motion?
Yes, since they are county property, donated from people to put in that Muntzen Park area museum.
Oh. Second.
Motion by Travis, second by Steve, to dispose of items talked about at Muntzen Park to be uh, removed and thrown away.
Yeah, absolutely.
Any discussion? If not, roll call Travis.
Aye.
Steve.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Jake, I motion carried four zero with the absence of Isaac. Uh, just on that topic, we could, what's left in there? Do we have pictures of what's left, so we?
I do not, I mean, I could take probably some general pictures, there's still quite a bit of stuff in there. And the reason a few of these things have come to the, you know, new roof put on there, um, steel roof, it's obviously not, you know, the historic roof that was on there. Then they leaked around the chimney, so they had somebody in there to fix up around the chimney, do some painting and stuff like that, kinda trying to clean up some of that stuff. So I think what they have in there now is in pretty good shape and they, you know, wanna keep it for now, so.
Perfect. All right, discussed Alverd Woods Dock. Um, and then the Airport Lake Camp Pads are pretty much the two, same discussion. Um, go ahead, Chad, what do we have?
Sure, so we got, um, so originally we were thinking like a budget about fourteen thousand, um, had a quote from a local vendor that does docks out of um, the Cedar Lake area. Um, so got that price down to like thirteen thousand on a new dock. Actually, it met with the family, um, they've increased their amount, they donated eight thousand, um, so the original seven that we were talking about. So then um, I would be back asking for that five thousand to cover the balance of that. So with that comes a couple things um, pointed out to us by David, I think there is potentially um, some benefit for waiting till January second. Um, according to her financial advisor, so she thanks us, thanks you for that. Um, however, she did issue me a check that was posted January second, um, because she wanted to make sure that we got paid, you know, she's committed to this project. Um, and he had, or he had, so anyways, I don't know, here, did you have any reasons?
No, I will just tell Jake that the private auditor.
Never got a hold again. So we're working on some things on what we wanna do with that check until January second, um, but anyways, we'll work on that. Which brings us to probably the next question, um, do we wanna get a order? Um, or we can wait a couple months, I mean, I can talk to him just so we don't have an increase over the winter time or?
Yep, so this is why these two items are signed together, um. Currently, I think there's thirteen-five in the county betterment, to use for county parks. So the county could move forward and purchase this dock with the funds we have earmarked for county betterment. With that being said, the eight thousand dollar donation, um, I would assume will go back into county betterment, January second. Then the direction of the camping pads at airport.
Okay, you wanna give that briefly? So there are four sites out there who'd like to maybe try and get concrete pads for yet this season, if possible. Um, just a quick refer, just a quick call, you know, twenty-four hundred was what I had for a guesstimation, I would like to think that would come in underneath that. I haven't got any bids or anything like that, I just reach out to a couple people and say, hey, here's where we're at, give me a high number for what the Terry stuff, so. That comes in at eighty-eight or eight thousand eight hundred, which would put us a little over, I think, what the betterment was depending on obviously timing and all of that good stuff, right? So Sheila keeps me squared up on that stuff, but.
So to add to the conversation, um, we missed this on Thursday at our work session. Um, we can take it out, not a problem. Um, we put in ten thousand of new county betterment funds to take care of the camping site pads. Knowing that we, we'll get that check on January second of eight thousand.
So we started with the thirty-five thousand and then we added ten, but you, it looks here like twenty-one thousand five hundred spent.
Yeah, that was a mower acquisition.
So, so you would have twenty-three in there.
Correct, so thirteen for the dock and then ten roughly for the pads.
Yeah, with potentially eight being left over at the end of the day, when we cash that check, whenever we decide, whatever the private auditor wants us to do.
He doesn't understand what happened from Thursday afternoon until today. Not trying to throw anything under the rug here, but, so that's what his request is. County betterment fund, local office of sales tax. Today, we could move ahead with the dock.
And then if you would give me the okay or there's consensus, whatever, I'll go out and get you three or four concrete bids and bring them back.
That'll be.
A few weeks for you guys to open and see if you wanna proceed with those pads at airport.
That'll be pending public area on the twenty-second though.
Okay.
So. Reason why you would wanna do concrete now than in April?
Just because that gives us obviously the freezing the thought to let things settle and it gives us kind of a jumpstart on the spring, um, anything we can get knock off in the fall and. But yeah, I mean, if it doesn't work, you know, um, finances and we need to wait till spring, I'm fine with that as well. I guess however, if you wanna try and push it through this fall, great, if not, I can have some time to think about it.
I would say you'll be good on this fall, there's another one project in Alverd County that you could have electric campers.
Yeah.
So.
So those two things, like I said, trying to be transparent, um. Chad didn't get us our numbers until like Thursday.
Right, yeah, sorry, Shane, I'm. I'll tell you what, man, in short, we sneak up on you, you lose the whole day of productivity, don't quote me on the payroll.
I emailed those, but I need those.
So nothing with general, basic, and supplemental, nothing with his budget, strictly county betterment, local office of sales tax. You're not buying it back and putting it in this fall?
No, we wouldn't put it in, but I mean, obviously, we probably want it on at, you know, our storage facility. Um, just because I know I don't wanna get pinged with, oh yeah, where's your, you know, fourteen thousand dollar dock, oh, he's, you know, he's holding it for us, but. Yeah, there again, right, I mean, of course he would hold it until January, well, unless we pay for it now, I guess, but.
So we probably need a resolution accepting that. The issue with the private auditor, which has not got back to us yet, is the post.
Yeah, I guess, that's a ponderous question, but as you turn in the room, it would make more sense to me logically to wait and buy it until after the money's in hand. If you're not putting in, um, then take delivery over the winter or next spring for you.
I like the winter.
That's not my call, Sheila's call. Uh, but we will need a resolution at some point, so. Yeah, and I mean, again, that's fine, we're not, I mean, even if we were to get it today, we wouldn't put it in, obviously, because we're gonna be taking out probably middle of October, certainly governor anyway, so. Um, is that price from the vendor? I would have to double check, but I would, I would think if I called the individual and said, hey, where it go, he would get it in his inventory and ear tied it to us, I mean, I mean, that, I don't know for sure, but that's what I would do if I was selling the thing, I would, you know, purchase it now and guarantee that price, but. I'll have to reach out and see, you want me to do that, see if um, he'll hold that for us until the current year and that kinda makes things cleaner.
What about the concrete then, you guys wanna move ahead without? Or do you wanna add that to the budget amendment, which we'll discuss in a little bit?
Going with maybe I'm wondering, I have no problem, but. What about your part?
The Split Rock? Yeah. So, and again, I have some of that, some more of that information in um, in my department update, but um, yes, we have had um, some more interest in maybe some seasonal pads or some of that stuff, so um. If I can just expand a little bit, so Shane um, found our new board member, um, met us out there at Airport Lake and we shot some site elevations um, to see where we could get sewer line to, I do have a call into a local contractor to see what roughly that would cost per foot to install some sewer lines there as well, so we can maybe look at adding to that, you know, next spring or in the future, whenever, um, you know, that might come through. Get this budget amendment stuff cleaned up and then I might be in over the winter asking for some more money, I guess is what I'm, but you know, but. At the same time, we went to Split Rock, we've got some areas cleaned out there, kind of on the uh, south east end of the campground, we think we could get six um, full hookup sites in there. Whether those would become seasonal or just, you know, full hookups, uh, obviously either way, right? So um, there is some discussion there and we've got some planning going on for that. I need to get a little deeper into weeds on that with the electric, well, with an electrician, I don't know if our board and everything there, you know, our breaker boxes will handle another addition. So we might be to that point, um, if I remember correctly, the last time Brian had something done down there, we were kind of maxed out. So we might be to the point where we have to back up and then rebuild that whole, you know, bring in a nice setup like we've got at airport, so. I don't have a good answer for it, we would like to do some more stuff there, it just might be that first step might be a little more expensive than what we would like to just pull.
I've just heard some people like, well, why they spending all the money up at airport?
So for me, and again, it's much easier because the infrastructure is there, right? You know, we've kind of stretched Split Rock along and, and I've gotten by with what we can and it's that big step of, okay, now we gotta reinvest here. Um, those are the things people don't see, right?
No.
It's like, oh, they didn't gain anything, but we got big fancy breaker boxes and electrical panels installed. So um, I need to do some more checking, but I would love to do some more stuff down there because I think that's the next step, definitely.
Well, I think there's a lot more people that, I mean, I think you could get a few more people in there.
I don't, I don't disagree, I, I think you could probably rent out five or six seasonal sites pretty quickly if you wanted to, so.
But it's, that's a question.
No, I would love to, so we're slowly crawling in that direction.
So what's the direction you guys wanna do with the four pads, go out and get quotes and use the, you said thirteen, five, that's in there currently?
Yeah.
And then wait on the dock until you get back to us on, if they look over until January second? You guys all good with that, or do you guys?
Yeah, I guess.
So I guess that's the first thing, so you guys want to get some quotes on the four camping pads at Airport Lake? Travis?
Yeah.
Scott?
Yeah.
Yep, so go ahead and get those and then with the budget amendment, we can discuss that at that point. Just to throw in another ten thousand authority, at least on the final save.
Yeah.
But the eight thousand will come in.
Sure.
And then.
I will get you that, I'll have that answer when I come back with those bids in a couple weeks, how's that sound, and then we can get them both cleaned up.
Anything else?
What was that?
Sorry. It's Justin delayed.
I mean, I can't, the day it doesn't hurt my feelings at all, it doesn't, it's not gonna, it's not gonna really bother us as long as we can keep that, I get that price guaranteed at that point in time and then it just keeps everything.
Right.
Talking in general, that's what I get for tax code and.
Yeah, right.
It kinda seems like it's, even though it's, we got the check, it's kinda like we shouldn't do, you know, like they said, wait till after game.
Sure, sure, yeah, I'm good with that.
Anything else for department update?
Um, couple things, let me see here, cause I had to kind of program. Sorry, I'm taking a question.
All good.
So the board, we have discussed this the last few years, um. We're looking at going to online reservations and pay cashless system. So we're, we're hoping that next year we can um, be like a transition year. Um, we're getting a lot more calls for reservations, especially at Airport, maybe not so much at, at Split Rock right now, but we get a lot of people traveling through even for a one night stop. That wanna have a reservation, right, they wanna know that there's gonna be something available when they get there. Plus, a lot of the other counties are going to this, um, just a lot of benefits to it. And, and from my standpoint, it gets us from handling all of those receipts and checks and plus, again, anybody under the age of thirty, uh, you know, they don't know what a checkbook is, or do they wanna carry cash? And I don't blame them, so I think it's, it's, it's the direction and if we don't head in that direction, we'll be the only county here probably in a few years that doesn't um, take that, so um, we're gonna work towards that, we have a statewide training on the twenty-second of October that we're gonna go to to try and learn some more about that on the backside of it. Tina Arcampo's at Airport Lake is gonna be back, she's agreed to help me work through this next year, has boots on the ground at the campground to help train um, our campers, because we'll, we'll obviously have some um, kit back, right, I mean, I'm, I'm old school, I still like to pay with cash, because I know I'm not going in the hole at that point, but uh, I also know that that's not the direction of the future, so uh, there will be some people that are very happy with us as we transition through that, so she's agreed to help me with that process. So that snowballs into, we decided to leave the camping, the board voted to keep the camping rates the same next year as they are this year. Because when you go to that online reservation, there is going to be a four dollar um, charge for the registration fee online, so. Whether that's done ahead of time or that's done with a QR code paying in the campground, there will be an additional fee. Um, there's gonna be some revenue that we need to collect, uh, I don't know how all that stuff works, that'd be a question for Matt, but right, you have a company that runs through before it gets to Matt and the account set up, so. And then obviously some credit card fees and some of that stuff, so um, so we decided to freeze the rates, um, the board um, voted to keep the rates the same. Uh, and move forward as far as that goes for next year, so that's why, so we need everybody um, work through that system as well.
So will that be strictly online, or can people still just drive off and get a spot?
So again, right, there's a lot of different ways of doing that, there is um, where it's all. So again, right, there's a lot of different ways of doing that. There is, um, where it's all reservable, and then there's also just cashless where, so. My way of thinking to start with, it kind of was the board is, is we would designate certain parts of the campground would be reservable, and then the other parts would still be walk up. But they have the system now where you can scan a QR code and it takes you to, uh, the site that you can pay cashless at that point in time, whether, you know, however you do it, so. But the goal would be to be eventually completely cashless at that point in time. And then as a department head, that makes me really excited because now I don't have staff or myself, you know, having, that's one of my big fears, right? I mean, I run into that a lot of times when I ask somebody, hey, you haven't paid your camping fees, and they can I just give you the money? And I'm like, I will get you an envelope and you put it in there, right, but I don't ever want to see with cell phones, I don't want my picture showing up with me grabbing cash out of somebody's hand at Airport Lake, right? So I always make sure they put it in an envelope and sign it before I touch the money, so. It, it eliminates a big potential thing from my end and, you know, making sure my staff is protected as well, so.
That's the picture I want.
That doesn't surprise me. So anyways, so there's, I think, a lot of good going forward with that. It's just going to be a little bit of a pain to get through it, so. Any questions on that or concerns?
This is all part to just.
The two camp, the two major campgrounds, we haven't discussed at all, right? We still do collect twelve or fifteen hundred dollars in our three primitive sites. The problem gets there is, is if you don't have cellphone receptions and we're not providing a wifi, then that's not an option, right? So, um, right now, we're fortunate that both Split Rock and Airport, um, have decent cellphone reception, so we should be fine, um, going that route. Down the road, and Matt discussed this and, and asked for it a couple of times, is having some wifi provided in each campsite? But again, that's kind of a, a touchy situation, and I don't know exactly all the ins and outs of the IT stuff. I think I'm robbing internet off of shop, running the sheriff's department now anyways, so. All right, well, yeah, I know we're, we got, I don't know where we get beamed in from that big tower on the south end, but. Anyways, some stuff to work through that. I'm sure we'll have some hiccups that I'll be really excited to deal with as we get through that process, but, um, the direction that we need to go. Uh, turn over the annual report to the conservation board. They'll be approving that, so next month when I'm up here, I'll, I'll present the annual report for you. As far as the guys, obviously, the mowing's been a nightmare. We're hard shifting over to, um, getting some other stuff done. We had some firing, or excuse me, some camping rooms donated, um, that our guys are installing at Split Rock or Good Lord Saudi. Oh, we have some new rock on the driveway at House Park in Saudi, uh, just before it flooded. So maybe we should have waited, but anyways, it, it didn't tear it up too bad. The guys were able to clean it up, um, pretty quickly. I think we have one park, one driveway and parking lot left that we need to get to clear up in the northwest part of the county that was flooded for a little bit, but. Got one area left to clean up for, from the storm damage and the flooding. Otherwise, we've been, um, getting fire breaks mode, um, youth deer season starts on the twentieth, and then, and festive season, we show that they're after, so. We like to make sure all of our parking lots are shined in the areas that are ready to go for the youth to get them out in, uh, the wild block areas. Matt, obviously, I've had him helping with the mowing. I've got him taking some photos and stuff of our areas in the county. We're trying to up, upgrade the website photos. And get that a little bit larger. He's obviously been working with, um, this faculty and staff at the schools as we get back in with his programming. And we just finished up our fall hunter ed class this past weekend. I think they had twenty six students done at the, um, Virg for Gun Club in Boyd there. So that's pretty much updates, um. The only other two questions, and again, it's, it's for discussion, um, as far as I know, we've had some discussion in the past, and I'm trying to stay out of the way the best I can. Two things, um, whether in budget amendments or down the road, if we discuss a vehicle purchase. I know those are always hot topics. Maybe, I don't know, I'll have to wrestle, arm wrestle, shower or something, I don't know. I'm sure you're always looking for a vehicle replacement, but all right, so. But yeah, that, if you keep that in the back of your mind, and then I know we've had some discussion on buildings. I know I see you guys got Tiff on there, and I know we're kind of out of the running there, but again, down the road, government, um, even if we don't make a big decision on structure and what we want to do, even I, I would, I would entertain some meetings or discussions on I know site location, and I've talked several times about where to go. Well, is it, do we have the ground for it? If we do, should we be looking at maybe doing some grading and, and break this thing up into a couple of phases where we want to head in that direction? So let's either get the area purchased, get it cleared, get the grade leveled up and stuff like that, you know, there could be some pretty significant costs there that we could maybe take a smaller bite out of that and then have some, you know, fluff, or I should say fluff, but money left over for other departments or whatever until it builds back up. You know, whether we use that betterment fund or, or however we approach that, um, I don't know. But something to think about, I was just thinking that the other day after my last discussion with the, the staff, that maybe we could look at site prep or something like that. It's kind of a, a first step or phase in there to kind of get that rolling, but again, something I would entertain more discussion if you would like, but.
Yeah, Chad did stop and talk to me. My idea was to put this as an agenda item, but county betterment is pretty healthy, healthy right now, um, pending the October fifth, fifteenth ambulance discussion, so. Seeing where the board's going to go with that, it could leave some room for county betterment funds. Currently, it has a hundred and ninety-three thousand, um, just the camping pads that's left to be taken out of it. And with the dock, so. That fund is pretty healthy of the local office and sales tax.
Yeah.
The vehicle purchase, I mean.
I mean, we're not, we're not along the side of the road yet. I mean, we're, we're doing what we can with it, so I know we just headed into the shop two weeks ago and had some more stuff done besides general maintenance on it, so, but.
And that's that three, the one ton?
One, or half ton Dodge. It's the truck that Matt currently uses. Half ton, yeah.
That one is a half ton.
So. But before we leave the topic, conservation, your comment about the camp posts and the mowing triggered my memory. Um, so this never came back before your board, but if you recall, the summer, we had a discussion regarding compensation for those folks and ten ninety nines and, and bank contractors and all that discussion. It never came back to you guys because it came back to this board because they're this board's folks. Uh, but we did modify those agreements in July, and they did execute your agreements in July, um, that we only compile with standards and everybody that cares, so. Just FYI for the record for those who are watching, I posted him here in July, and his board goes wrong.
Yep.
Yep, 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 yep. And I think maybe, maybe presented that briefly, I think it was one of those meetings you had a shootout for, or, uh, meeting upstairs, but yeah.
And then what it costs with a sign that you put on?
Yeah, so we purchased a sign, and then we've got that set up at that campsite, so, um, and yeah, I've had some brief discussions there. I think that sounds like that program may continue unless anybody had any issues with that next year. He seemed to be on board. I think we've got thugs worked out of that, thanks to, um, a lot of different people, including David in the county. And then I've also talked with, um, Shelley, um, they had, and Brian, I had a guy firm commitment, but I think they're leaning towards coming back at Split Rock as well, which, again, they're phenomenal people, I mean, I will be very sad and disappointed when either of those two camp posts decides to move on because they do a fantastic job and take a lot of weight off of our shoulders, so if you see them, thank them, uh, yeah, as far as taxpayers and stuff go, they, they help us out a lot, so. Any, any questions?
No, I don't care. All right, thanks, Jared.
Thank you.
Next thing is Sheriff Ryan Schalberg. Good morning, Ryan.
Good morning, everyone.
Uh, two things, looks like, so the resolution nine eight twenty-five thirty-eight, a resolution setting room and board fees for individuals held at the Chickasaw County Jail.
And so last time we upgraded this was two thousand twenty-two, day to night, look back to, at that time, it was fifty dollars a day, we brought it to sixty-five, um, proposed to take it to seventy-five. The only reason is July first this year, I noticed Floyd County that they were increasing their fees to us, their fees in general, which is passed on to us to seventy-five a day, so. Just looking to make it a wash, so when someone is convicted, sentenced to jail time, to serve the county jail, we do charge them a room and board fee. Sometimes that fee can't be waived if the court's deemed that they don't have the funds to pay for it. So it's just a wash, because we take them over there anyway to house for us, so it's pretty much makes sense to wash, so I'm just trying to make it simple across the board. How we determine those fees is, there's really not a set at the state level, but we try to be similar to those around us, those similar in size to our facilities. So we're, we're right there. We're probably creeping up on higher end comparatively speaking, but just trying to keep up with what we're paying.
Can you explain the fee, fifty, eighty dollars, sorry, eighty?
Yeah, so if you, if there's a resident on Chickasaw County or someone decides that they would like to serve their time with us on another out of county conviction or charge, then we charge them eighty dollars a day. It has to be paid upfront. They can't serve that time unless it's paid upfront. We typically do not get those, but it's just something I'd like to have if that event would come up, so if they served here, we would take forward Floyd County anyway. But that money's paid upfront to us. And that, that's staying the same then, that's what's currently out.
Any other discussion? If not, is there a motion approved, nine eight twenty-five dash thirty-eight?
On move.
Motion by Steve saying that Travis to approve resolution number thirty-eight, setting room and board fees for individuals held at the Chickasaw County Jail. Um, just when I said that, is it, should it also say like other jails or just Chickasaw County?
Just Chickasaw County. Yeah, this is our resolution.
There still are, if you may, so to speak, housed elsewhere, legally, there's still are.
And then pay you, and then you pay Charles.
Correct. Charles is sentenced a bill a month later.
There's still are.
There's still are, but, yeah.
Sounds good.
Whether I take one or not, Sheila, we, we still have that fee that we charge them once they're convicted. I mean, that's sense.
Sounds good. Any other discussion? If not, we'll call Steve, Travis, Scott, Tom, Jake, how motion carried four zero with the absence of Isaac.
Do you have copy of the report?
I got three copies.
Okay.
Perfect. Uh, other thing is department update. Anything?
Yeah, so Jamie at Wall's back, uh, full time. Just give a beep, walked right in, picked up every left off, which has been fantastic for the dispatch jail side of things. It's pretty tapped in back, um. Adam's still out of medical. Hope to get an update here next week. He'll be back shortly thereafter that, his issue. His vehicle is being outfitted currently, so that, back by the time he gets back, so that'll be back on the road. Everything else seems to be going okay. Just keep in everybody staffed and request, time off requests and things, and to be channeled at times too, but we're, we can buy.
Question on the vehicles, um, the white truck that everyone's held at County Jail?
No, he never even got that, so.
So that's pretty much.
Oh, it, it hasn't moved, well, it's, it's moved, but it has a problem there, yeah. Yep.
The impala, the transport vehicle.
So what I did with that, I tried to take the cage out of it, because it was pretty tight in there anyway, and Adam's old charger, I decided to keep that, because we stuck my money into that as a reason. It's got a cage in it, so that one's, now we come our quote unquote transport, put that in the truck. I'm keep, can I keep the impala? It's worth more than me to keep it right now. Uh, use it as a school car, works out quite well. I did it at Iowa City last week, picked up some stuff. Took that, it's great, it's nice to have, and we are dispatchers and they go to schools and stuff, instead of taking their own vehicles, we got this. Honestly, then you have anybody else in the county offices, departments wants to use it or something like that, it's, it's free for the taken.
Yeah, I was, I was approached over the weekend and said, why did they take the cage out? I said, I don't want to have to ask.
Yep, it was pretty tight in there, with the cage in there. I mean, I can't remember how many years I, I drove the impala for a squad bar, I don't know how I hit it, but. Yep.
So then, once you get this new Tahoe outfitted within a couple of weeks, I hope?
I'll hopefully be back, maybe the end of this week, person asked.
Any vehicle for sale, I know?
Nope, I'm not planning on selling anything.
So you can get the white truck too?
Yep, that's our spare, that's fully outfitted spare, and it's got a radio in it, camera system in it, its own dedicated, uh, computer, it's it's worth us having that around. It's fourteen, a hundred and forty thousand miles, which I consider low miles for me, but as for a squad bar, maybe not, but it's nice to have that around, um, sometimes our jail staff will take that on transports, it's just a little bigger, so. If either one of them starts to nick one of those, yeah, I'll probably put on, on the auction block, but right now, that, that charger prior to getting it replaced and having just stuck eight thousand in the transmission, so it's worth us to have that around. So it's got a full cage in it and it's got a radio in it as well.
So the charger is going to keep all the equipment too, the radio and stuff?
Just the radio, everything else is out, because some of the stuff transferred into the Tahoe.
Um, did you ever get a Dazer, so those purchased?
We've got them, uh, we've got a meeting set up for next week to get the, the train on those and get those in service.
Any other questions by anybody else?
Just if I can speak about the the, uh, electrical issues, we'll put it that way. I don't want to get into any issue with security, but, um, so the courthouse was done last week, the jail's being done hopefully this week.
Just the monitoring?
Set up monitoring the setup of incoming power to see what the load is and if there's any spikes in incoming or.
Issues with it, we'll put that way.
Yeah, heating up this week's going to be good for that, because they used to probably kick back on, and then they haven't been running, I think we turned them off last week, that run for a couple of weeks. I mean, because somebody in the jail, their help of theirs, we don't, we turned that one off, but we'll turn things back on now, I'm guessing because it's going to heat up this week and that building's still coming.
Looks insulation a bit.
No, it's not.
So anyway, just for the board, you and the courthouse, um, we are looking into those issues that have brought, uh, arise to us a couple of months ago, and this has been a long time ago, but looking into it, we will get a report of the contractor doing that for us, of, of any issues of imbalance to overload issues, and then we will dissect that all once we have those reports, um. Just letting everybody know that we have not forgotten that. Anything else?
I, no, at this time, no, depending on anything over and stuff, dude.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, guys. I'll fit that familiar, if you like.
Right, I'll get it to you. I'll probably bring it to the department.
Perfect.
All right, moving on then to discuss six projects urban renewal plan. Um, I believe the other attorney besides Jason, Jason has helped with this, our Don attorney. Um, so this is strictly to renew the urban renewal plan adding B twenty-two to the scope of work and to include that road as within the urban renewal plan. Sheila's office and myself have been back and forth with Papa Ray and Roman. So yeah, let me see if I can find this. This was sent to us this morning. Amendment number one. Anything I'm missing, Sheila? It just adds B fit, B twenty-two in there. It adds a little bit more value to the outbuilding at secondary roads. Nineteen ninety mission. It did add the two million dollars here in page three. Estimate date was two hundred and twenty-six, estimate it costs two million dollars. Um, what else did they update?
Did you say the fees and?
The fees went up a little bit to fifty thousand. Those are for plant engineering fees. Any else I'm missing, Roman?
A tourist fee is encompassed in the project one, right?
Yes, yep. So this has nothing to do with the if you guys make this motion today, this is to send the letters, Sheila has it right here if I can speak. Today or tomorrow, we will send the letter, Sheila will probably send the letters to the taxing entities. Um, the public hearing is set for
October sixth.
October second, no, I'm sorry, October sixth. The consultant meetings with the taxing entities is set for September fifteenth. Um, that is with the school districts, uh, the cities that were included in the original one. And then we set the public hearing notice September sixteenth, October six.
Oh, I'm going to set, I'm going to send it to the newspaper about September fifteenth. So, and so, and the, and you, you, did you put the meeting as on September sixteen?
Yes, the consult meeting is September sixteen. Ray will do those on behalf of us, um, either. Ray will do those on behalf of us. Um, I will try to attend at two o'clock that day. Um, but I don't think many people show up for the first one. Any questions, board supervisors? This had nothing to do with the public hearing needed for selling the bond. That is a separate email I got from Jason. Gonna start with that next week. Travis will have to get us some, uh, proposed bond interest rates and then come up, I think, next week to explain that whole process of the first public hearing to exceed the six hundred thousand dollars. But that is also being in the works. So today is resolution thirty-nine. It's setting the dates of the consultation meetings and a public hearing on proposed amendment to number one. Amendment number one to the C W E C urban renewal plan in Chickasaw County, Iowa. Any questions?
So it was discussed before that when we went through all this, that we, you can't come up with a plan, but you have no idea what's gonna happen down the road. This can be amended at any time, so this is the first amendment.
Correct. And pretty much all it's really doing is adding B twenty-two and then adding some, um, change of value to the estimates. There's nothing else that's being changed, um, just that items. So this will be set in the public hearing, uh, to October sixth. And then we have to do the consultation, the letters will be sent out today or tomorrow to the tax bodies. It was very specific instructions, I'll have to send those out. And make sure you get a receipt. Right? So they've been working well with us to make sure we do this. Like our state of law has told us to.
I'll make that motion.
So I can. Motion by Travis, seconded by Steve to approve resolution nine eight twenty-five dash thirty-nine, setting dates of a consultation and the public hearing on proposed amendment number one to C W E C urban renewal plan in Chickasaw County, Iowa. Any discussion? If you have anything missing?
I don't think so, I'm just still married to your family, so we're doing it.
Perfect. Any discussion, board members? All right, roll call. Travis?
Hi.
Steve?
Hi.
Scott?
Hi.
Jake, I, motion is carried with the absence of Carter.
I'm good, yeah.
Thank you.
Can you just send us some of the contact cards and the kind of page?
Just another discussion on this TIF urban renewal. I guess I don't know the direction you guys want to take on a response to Omen Energy Solutions. Uh, we still have some time to talk about that. Or do you guys want me to reach out to them to come back up? I guess you guys saw the graphs prepared by the assessor of the five-year industrial exemption. I guess what's your feelings of moving forward with that business proposal? If anything? What do you guys want next? What would you like to see next? I believe they were at ninety percent, if I can recall.
Who's gonna tell us that? Okay.
Any feelings, any thoughts? I just don't wanna leave them out there hanging, I guess. You wanna wait for Isaac to have a consensus or might be better?
Yeah, probably would be best.
Fair enough. I just, I just, I just don't want them to be waiting for us to make a decision and, and, um.
Yeah, it should be, I'm not sure what's agenda, what's say, it's, I just agree.
We'll put it on next week's agenda then, to discuss the, um, I call it the business proposal by Omen Energy Solutions under TIF urban renewal plan. Anything else on that agenda item today? If not, we'll move on to the additional agenda item. I think this is what we're remembering for.
For the budget amendment, so.
Um, just a recap, so we're gonna, let's see what it says. Open request for proposals, RFP for cooling towers replacement at the courthouse. It did go back out for bids, um, they were due back by three o'clock on Friday. Three. Yeah. Three o'clock.
It's far.
Again, only one bid. I think we have done our due diligence on this issue for
Yeah, I do love it once a month and hoping somebody.
Two, three months. What was your feeling about opening this? It was still sealed. It was dropped off at September fifth at two forty-four.
I would be at fair, we're opening, we, like you said, we did our due diligence, we won out.
I'm glad you got it, we've done our late weekend.
Installation includes one train, twenty, one thirty ton air cooling tower, wiring, antifreeze and pipe and fittings, wiring, train and labor. Looks like all the specs with ours. One first labor warranty, second through fifty year compressor parts warranty. Labor materials to install, one hundred and fifty-two thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars. This proposal is valid for ten days, price is up to change after ten days. In order to protect the lawn of the courthouse, we are asking Chickasaw County to supply bridge planks for the crane to sit on. Terms build every thirty days as completed. If you have any questions or if we can be of service, please call the phone number out there. Um, signed by Mick Gage, President Mick Gage. Um, he did give, uh, a train product report of a four-stage air compressor, condenser, sorry, condenser unit. Uh, like what we have up there now. Uh, visiting with him on the phone three, four weeks ago, just wanted to share too, that if we approve this, um, he's been told that they're about sixteen weeks out to get one here, so about four months. Label, labor and materials to install, one hundred and fifty-two thousand, four fifty. Any comments, concerns, uh? Building needs it. I believe we found out it was about twenty-five, twenty-six years old. It's been out in the weather, it's been out in the sun. Not saying, I guess we have nothing compared to, we'll put it that way. It was within the estimates that we thought. Maybe a little bit higher than I thought, but I guess what do we do?
I don't think we have a choice.
I would second that.
So upon acceptance?
I would sign it to be.
Your signature.
Correct. What do you guys think about the bridge planks? Are we borrowing some from secondary roads?
I would think that they share something that we use.
Because what they do, they kinda go where west of the dumpster there, it's the easiest, because the air conditioner is actually this way. The problem on that side, then that's a lot of our utilities coming in the building, especially from the sheriff's office. So we don't wanna crush anything that's in the ground. They back it up the ramp and they hook it and they lift it up and take whatever. That's how I've seen it, stuff done in the past. So that's where the crane would sit, would be in the west side of the courthouse, in the middle of the building. Any other questions you need answered, or what's your direction?
Only a moment, Mick Gage. Here's it.
Is there a second?
No second.
Motion by Travis, seconded by Scott, to award the cooling tower replacement at the courthouse to Mick Gage, Omen Energy Incorporated in the amount of one hundred and fifty-two thousand, four fifty. And authorized chair signature. Any discussion?
That's good, they made it through the summer and you got plenty of time to get installed before meeting again next summer.
I guess I'll bring an update back, but he'll decide when it shows up to his facility and we'll, we'll strike, schedule something with Dave Gorman. Um, I would say March or April, unless we can hit the frozen ground time.
Yeah.
You know, if the ground's still frozen, then we don't have to worry about too much of the compacted. Um, this will be funded, I think, out of, uh, capital project funding. Is what we heard last Thursday, so.
Yeah, and we already had it budgeted, we just kind of rearranged it for the firm.
Any other discussion? If not, we'll call Travis.
Hi.
Scott?
Hi.
Steve?
Hi.
Jake, I, motion carried four zero with the absence of Isaac. It'll take about a two-minute recess to get Sheila's staff all these claims. So if they want to start, is okay, Sheila?
Sure. At ten o'clock?
Yeah, there's a second. We'll get the white book signed later, but. All right, so moving on to, I think, discuss fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six budget amendment number one.
So you guys, I did put this in your board packet, the notice of the public hearing. And I do believe I gave you guys my spreadsheet too. Did you give my spreadsheet? I did put that in, I did it right in here. Sorry, I didn't read the schedule.
I should have put in the spreadsheet too.
Okay, so the spreadsheet. And everything pretty much stayed the same, except for we did separate the hundred and thirty thousand for the rock that was used during the flood from, we took it out of, we split it between the infrastructure and the rural services. Uh, public health and environmental health gave me their accounts, so it's more detailed there for their expenses, and it still comes up to the same amount that we had, that she had requested, that Lisa had requested, a hundred thousand for public health with fifty thousand dollars with the revenue coming in, so fifty thousand dollars revenue, hundred thousand expenditures for public health, thirty thousand for environmental health revenues and thirty thousand for environmental health expenditures. We looked at, uh, it's on page three, going down, all I did is, we already had capital projects, we had two hundred and fifty thousand dollars budgeted. I just went and changed around from using non-departmental to use it general services for the courthouse so that it stays with the courthouse. We also, Jake and I were talking about it, we didn't do anything for the administrative expense in general services for the TIF, and we have a forty thousand dollar, um,
Good luck fee.
Coming, so we thought we better increase that at least thirty-five thousand, so if you look at the last page, we have two that were added, we got conservation, ten thousand dollars was added to their budget for, well, it was actually the board supervisor's budget for the county betterment fund for using for the airport and the docks for Howard Woods. And then on the non-departmental, we got the administrative expense, which we increased thirty-five thousand for the TIF expenditures for the lawyers and the engineer and everything, till we get the money for the revenue, but. And then the bottom part just kinda shows, so we have to transfer this to the dome, and it just shows the trans, the accounts that were affected or the service areas affected. And then if you look at my dome printout, um, it should match in the middle columns for one thing. The second thing is, at the bottom, I gave my explanation of changes. And if you guys could read through those and make sure that, first of all, there's nothing spelled wrong. Second thing is that I had all the targets.
There was one more additional change, it was revenue from,
Oh, that's right.
Um, the insurance that Roman is paying and, sorry, secondary road fund is paying, and the insurance that EMA is paying back to us to GS.
Okay.
Where is that number at?
Okay, just a second.
You brought it back, it has intergovernmental, I believe?
Yes.
Transferred back in.
Just a second, I'll check it out. Okay, so if you look at page three, where it says general services, I have insurance reimbursement. We had seventy-five thousand in there currently, and I raised it a hundred thousand because just Roman alone is paying two hundred and thirty-eight. And there is another account for, um, the comp, which is, uh, Roman's got like sixty-three thousand he pays for the, um, workman's comp. But that goes at a different account, so I just raised this for that, for just the other insurances. So I did add a hundred thousand dollars revenue to general supplemental for insurance, insurances that were getting reimbursed by EMA and secondary roads.
Correct. So really, by looking through this whole budget amendment on Friday, um, the net expenditure is actually a negative to GBGS because we brought in more revenue from Medicare, Medicaid, a hundred thousand, sorry, fifty thousand. And then the thirty thousand that came in from the grant in environmental health. And then we fixed the revenue line item for insurances of a hundred thousand. Coming in from non-GBGS funds. The other things were all explained on Thursday. Of the swap dollars for the bridge, that one point six mil. The one oh two for HMA maintenance projects was leftover, that was not expensed last year. He is gonna take care of the twenty-seven five from this Indian fund balance to the roads is. Um, Lisa and her staff got public health numbers to Sheila, which is broke down in the spreadsheets. Environmental health expenditures are explained. EMS again for the donation. Spend more of that. Insurance, you know, primary cemetery fix from sixty-two to seven thousand. That is a standalone levy rate. And then the two that we kinda added without your guys' guidance, but I'm trying to inform you guys, you don't have to do the ten thousand dollar county betterment for, um, parks and, it's for parks. Or the thirty-five thousand for administration services. Or the thirty-five thousand for administration services. So we can keep moving forward with the architect and that project. So if you guys see anything that you need to change or would like to take out. And then the dome worksheet, like Sheila said. Explanation of changes, line eight, line twenty-seven, a bridge swap, secondary roads paid for and to reimburse by DOT. Lines nine and ten are being increased by public health and environmental health for changes, services, permits, and increase for reimbursement of insurance. Line nineteen are being increased by public health and environmental health for increased costs to change services and permits, charge services and permits. Line eighteen is being increased by EMS to purchase equipment. Line twenty-one is being increased by conservation for a dock at Howard's Woods and concrete passage at the airport. Line twenty-two is being increased for expenses related to the flood. Property insurance and timing of payments for vendors had to be carried over to this fiscal year. And line twenty-four is increased to cover expenses setting up TIF, and will be reimbursed. And finally, line twenty-five was increased for late taxes that came in. That is the final exception here. Anything else you guys want to see? If not, the motion would be of a public hearing notice to the paper this Friday, Thursday, and Friday. And this public hearing is set for then September twenty-second at nine-ten in the boardroom of the courthouse. Anything else that was missed? Or needs to be changed? Something you don't like? Any questions? I think my goal, and I hope it's your goal, is to get through this one and then see what's happening in October, November, and see if we are willing to do a second one. If there's some wish list or wants needed, say, November, December.
Fair enough.
Fair enough. Otherwise, is there a motion to set the public hearing for budget amendment number one, fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six? For September twenty-second, nine-ten, and authorized publication for this Thursday and Friday.
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second? Sorry. Motion by Steve, seconded by Scott. To approve notice of public hearing, amendment number one of the fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six, to be published in the New Hampton Thursday, Nashville Friday papers. For a public hearing set for September twenty-second at nine-ten in the boardroom. Any discussions? If not, roll call. Steve?
Hi.
Travis?
Alright.
Scott?
Hi.
Jake, I motion is carried four zero with the absence of Isaac.
Let me say so.
Any assignments? Anybody have any assignment last week here in the class?
Had a meeting in September fourth on Warburg, a real quick meeting. Just written down some last, last meeting, set the date for the next meeting, had the treasurer's report. That's a discussion of your treasurer's report about movies and CDs that are going to do this month. We had the submission of one bill that we paid, and had update on training for the different entities that are involved with North East Iowa, and then we had an equipment update. There really was no equipment updates other than the blowers. One of the fire chiefs had updated us that him and one of the other boys had just been to Appleton the day before looking at a fire truck and an emergency response vehicle. Bare bones was one point one billion.
Who was that with?
Here, North East Iowa response. That's all.
Travis, second?
Steve? I had a CSS meeting on September third, so that'd been Wednesday. Just a couple of things. I should actually find this email.
So it's alarming to us that DHS now is saying, please stay aboard and pay claims because you guys have the money and you guys can pay the claims. Let me read Mary's email sent to the board. So Mayor has given an update and Supervisor Greg from Butler County asked that I share my comments about claims with the board by email. I spoke with Rob, DHS, after he received a complaint that CSS was not paying claims received after July thirtieth. He stated that he needs us to pay all H Y twenty-five claims as long as we have money. I told him that we need to set up an endpoint so that we can wrap up CSS as an entity. He told me to use my discretion. CSS will continue to honor fiscal year twenty-five claims through September thirtieth since that was our usual practice prior to closure. Take care and have a great day. So the concern is, we need to close the books, right? CSS is the only district, region, that had its own fiscal record of employers and so now we made a motion to make September thirtieth our end date of any claims prior to June thirtieth to be paid. CSS cannot continue on waiting for claims to come in six, nine months later. So September thirtieth is the latest that we will provide claims due for service of render prior to June thirtieth. So that is going to make two more meetings for us for sure. One in September, one in October. CSS still has a cash balance of July thirty-first of three point one million dollars. You know, at some point, that money's just going to be transferred right to DHS and say, this is yours, and CSS is going to be on your business. There was three time sheets that we had to approve, the three contract employees, Mary seventeen fifty, Chris twenty-six hundred, and Megan forty-seven fifty. We approved the claims and set the next meeting to September twenty-fourth at ten o'clock. Hosted again by Chickasaw County Boardroom here. I'll just finish. We are here to serve the people of mental health disabilities until June thirtieth, but thereafter is not our job anymore. We need to wrap this up and give the money left over back to the state. It's a fair question.
There's still much to claim, yeah.
So yeah, claims that we approved for the month of. Let me find this email. So Chris is very nice. Total claims was, I use tires, so it's very easy to track, three hundred and fourteen thousand dollars. Yep, and those claims are counties to Prairie, I mean, a whole bunch of vendors, just a whole bunch of different vendors yet. Attorneys, Johnson County Sheriff's Office, just going to name a few that's in here. Seamy Akers. Scott's Pharmacy, you know, any probably mental health transport to Howard County Sheriff. Central Iowa Juvenile Detention. Black Hawk Grand Dune Mental Health. A Doc Crisis Stabilization Center. At some point, yes, the claims have to stop. We want to pay the bills, but I guess what is our responsibility moving for after June thirtieth?
So did you say you had a million dollars somewhere on July thirtieth?
I know. I didn't, but right now the balance is three point one million end of July.
That's quite long, I mean.
So there's still balance there. I don't know, we're just trying to move this on to DHS. That's what they want it. Other regions have done, they're done. But there's some people yet that want to pay the bills and then move forward. So I just don't get, you guys, I read in Mary's email that DHS Representative Rob is telling Mary. And it's sad that we didn't think of this before. You know, not us, but the state of Iowa. My final statement is, continue on, pay the claims that were dated prior to June thirtieth, but get them to us by September thirtieth. If not, maybe the state will pay them.
It's okay, those entities that have claims, they know they should have had them turned down. Not play in there. Three months later is not, not in my opinion.
Correct. So moving forward, I don't know, I think that's going to put a lot of burden on the counties to submit those claims for reimbursement to the ASO out of Hope County, and hopefully we get reimbursed. I think that's going to be the next avenue. That's my CSS update. Discuss future agenda items. Is there anything out there? TIF with online? Dave, you got anything? Brendan, you? Nothing?
Rise this morning, see if the week brings.
Otherwise, yeah, I don't see much right now, except for TIF and we're doing everything we can do with TIF and the renewal plan, so. Now the budget amendment sets, so. Today at one o'clock, we have department update meeting, and then a one-thirty public, sorry, department safety meeting. Otherwise? Is there a motion to adjourn?
Sorry.
Motion by Travis, seconded by Steve, to adjourn at ten twenty-two. I'm favorably say I. I propose absence.